Okay, I have ten o'clock. I will call the Commissioners Meeting of November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Welcome, everyone, and welcome back. Veteran Don Bradley, who's going to lead us in the pledge. And it's always nice to see Dr. Walt Howard, who's going to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of reflection, silence, meditation, and invocation. Oh, God our Father, we thank you today for life, health, and strength. Thank you for new mercies and new grace. Pray of God that your wisdom, your favor, your blessings be upon us. Thank you, God, for this commission. We thank you for government. We pray of God that the decisions made here today will reflect your glory, that your people may prosper, and that we may give you praise. We give you honor and glory. In thy name we pray, amen.
Okay, we'll move on to item number two on the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Board of Commissioners meeting as submitted.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Open up for any public comment. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Items for the Office of Children, Youth, and Families.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll move on to new business.
I make a motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the Coroner's Office and FPA Forensic Pathology Associates, Allentown, Pennsylvania, to provide forensic autopsies, neuropathology, pathology, and toxicology services at the rate set forth in the agreement and on as needed basis for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase of a conservation easement on behalf of the Agland Preservation Department for seventy-two point one-two acres owned by Stephen J. and Dolores E. Crick for a total cost of two hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
A motion and a second, and I think Eric's going to share a few words on this motion.
Good morning.
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 On behalf of the York County Agland Preserve Board, we request your consideration of the following easement purchase by the County of York. This is a county-only easement purchase, and it will utilize two thousand and twenty-two county funds for a farm owned by Stephen and Dolores Crick. It's located in Lower Chancford Township, seventy-two point one-two acres. The Cricks raise corn and hay on the farms, as well as beef cattle and horses. The easement application met all of our minimum criteria. It's located in Lower Chancford Township's ag security area. Seventy-eight percent of the soils on the farm are in land capability classes one through four, and eighty-five percent of the easement is available for commercial ag production. The farm has a conservation plan, which was written in two thousand and twelve by the York County Conservation District, and a nutrient management plan that was written in two thousand and twelve as well. The farm ranked eighth out of forty qualifying applicants in our two thousand and twenty-two ranking cycle, and the Cricks have accepted eighty-five point seven percent of the easement value. The preservation of this farm will add to the more than six thousand acres preserved in Lower Chancford Township alone and push us over forty-seven thousand, five hundred acres as a county preserve. We request two hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for this easement purchase, and on behalf of the York County Ag Preserve Board, we respectfully request your approval.
Thanks, Eric. Any questions for Eric? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve an agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Human Services Department and Great Lakes Training, Inc., Mason, Michigan, to provide motivational interview training for the Human Services Division for a total cost of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve an agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Information Technology Services Department and KBS, King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, to provide certified mail services at a cost of twenty-nine cents per envelope.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a lease agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Information Technology Services Department and Fraser Advanced Information Systems, West Reading, Pennsylvania, to provide multi-function printing devices and maintenance for a total cost of eighteen thousand, four hundred and two dollars and two cents per quarter and a monochrome impressions at point zero zero two nine cents and color impressions at point oh two nine cents for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase by the County of York on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services, nine-one-one, from Baycom, Green Bay, Wisconsin, for six in-car modems and antennas for law enforcement vehicles at a total cost of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the District Attorney's Office in CDWG, Chicago, Illinois, for Cisco SmartNet firewall maintenance and software subscription for a total cost of thirty-eight thousand, thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents from January second, two thousand and twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six under a PA CoStarz contract. No county funds will be used for this purchase.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information Technology Services Department and CDWG, Chicago, Illinois, for Citrix software maintenance for a total cost of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-four cents from January first, two thousand and twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the County of York on behalf of the Juvenile Probation and Accountability of Life, York, Pennsylvania, to provide community-based services for youth involved in juvenile probation at a total cost of nine thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars for the period of December first, two thousand and twenty-three, to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve an agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and Lowbar Associates, Dillsburg, Pennsylvania, for the construction of the York County Juvenile Detention Center located at the York County Prison for a total cost of one million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, twelve dollars and twenty-three cents to be completed under the Keystone Purchasing Program.
I'm going to ask that the motion be amended to reflect the amount of one million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eight cents.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second on the amended motion. I have asked Jim Runcial to come and just speak briefly about items ten, eleven, and twelve. We certainly learned some lessons through our central booking project, so I just thought it'd be important for Jim to share a few words on these projects.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, this program or this project, we have spent countless hours reviewing drawings, on-site visits, to ensure that we are covering all aspects of the project. I am very confident that we have covered these aspects. We have proceeded, as you see on eleven and twelve, that we have off-contract. I mean by that is Lowbar Associates are not handling the door control and the camera portions. All three portions of this project are ready to go. Like I said, we've spent a lot of time making sure that we are prepared. So I do not foresee any issues at this time.
Thanks. Any other questions for Jim?
Questions, comments?
Great. Thanks, Jim. Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and ESCO Security Effort of Pennsylvania for materials and installation of CCTY systems for the Juvenile Detention Center to be located at the York County Prison for a total cost of seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and Montgomery Technology Solutions, Montgomery, Alabama, for the installation of the MTI Fairfly Door Control System in Charlie Dorm as part of the Juvenile Detention renovation project for a total cost of forty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to authorize the Veterans Affairs Department to solicit bids for approximately thirty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-two American flags for the two thousand and twenty-four Memorial Day.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the reappointment of the following individuals to the Bladed Property Review Committee for a three-year term effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, Cynthia Seibel O'Dell and John McLucas Dover.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the reappointment of the following individuals to the York County Land Bank Authority for four-year terms effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven, and there as listed below in the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the reappointment of Joe Mueller, York City, to the York County Redevelopment Authority for a four-year term effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the reappointments of the following individuals to the York County Industrial Development Authority, and there is listed below in the agenda.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve an application to encumber Act Thirty-two Liquid Fuels Tax Funds on behalf of the Controller's Office to PennDOT in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to be used towards the two thousand and twenty-four Bridge Bundle, which includes Bridge One Twenty-two on Maple Street in North Cudores Township and Bridge Two Thirty-eight on Franklin Town Road in Franklin Township.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion on behalf of the Community Development Department of the York County Planning Commission, authorizing and directing the Commissioners to execute the following amendments for grants included in the approved two thousand and twenty-two Continuum of Care Program, year agreement, and amendments thereto for funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Washington, D.C., Continuum of Care Program, and there is listed below in the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion on behalf of the Community Development Department of the York County Planning Commission, authorizing and directing the Commissioners to approve the following amendments to increase grant amounts for activities in the adopted two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, and two thousand and twenty-two York County Annual Action Plans for funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Washington, D.C., and there is listed below in the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve Tax Refund Register, two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-eight, authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds totaling four hundred and twenty-five dollars, twenty-two cents.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the weekly disbursements for the week of November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, totaling three million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars, eighty-six cents.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I am opposing this motion, the line item that reflects the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's going to the Susquehanna National Heritage Corporation. I voted against that, and I will not approve that portion of the check register. So please make sure that's noted in the meeting minutes. On to item number twenty-three.
Motion to approve the weekly disbursements for the week of November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, totaling eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars, three cents.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There were no executive sessions since our last meeting. Under other business, our preliminary budget is available online. It's also a printed copy is available in the lobby area of the Commissioners' Office that will stay out and available for people to review and provide comments. The Board of Commissioners will officially approve that sometime towards the end of December. If there's no other business, we'll move on to resolutions.
Motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty, authorizing the submission of a DCED statewide local share assessment grant of one million dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Horn Farm Farmhouse Rebuild Project and authorizing Alexis Campbell, Executive Director of the Horn Farm Center, and Tyler Cronister, CFO, County of York, to execute all documents and agreements between the County and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate obtaining the grant.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll open it up to any additional public comment. Just as a reminder, your name and your municipality and comments to three minutes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Good morning. My name's Laura Bosso. I'm from Fairview Township. I'd like to speak about the statement of work for the wireless broadband implementation for both Phase One and Two. The project summary states that York County would like to deliver broadband to economically challenged areas for York City, West York, and Northern York, and Hanover. However, the statement of work proposed by Big Wireless clearly states that wireless broadband service will be provided outdoors at street level only, and that there is no intention to bring direct support to end users and/or their devices. So they're going to bring the fiber optics to the utility pole and spray the environment with radiation for Wi-Fi service, but they're not going to bring the fiber to the home for home internet service. So how does this help the children at home doing their homework online if they don't have internet service to their home? It's going to just bring radiation to the street. Do they go outside in the street to do their homework in the winter time? How does this bring, bridge the digital divide? And how does this bring digital equity to urban and economically challenged neighborhoods? It doesn't. Placing radiation transmitting base stations on schools and wireless antennas in front of homes will only expose thousands of children and adults to pollution, contamination, and unwarranted surveillance. Big Wireless proposes to place base stations polluting radiation on top of West Penn High School, five elementary schools, the YMCA, a playground, and the Children's Home of York. Of all the places they could have chosen, why are they targeting places where children live and learn? Radiation, including non-ionizing radiation, is hands down the most studied toxin we are being subjected to, and children are especially vulnerable to the harmful biological effects. We should be protecting the children from environmental pollution, not forcing involuntary exposure on them. Our team has taken readings from, of radio frequency microwave radiation, pollution that's right now at schools, daycare centers, and playgrounds in York County, and have found levels that are extremely hazardous according to building biology. Thank you. We need to reduce children's exposure of radiation, not increase it. We are looking forward to meeting with you to discuss these urgent matters and to discuss the only responsible way to bridge the digital divide, and that's to bring the fiber optics all the way to the home-school business for all York County residents. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Sarah Thompson, Windsor Township. I just want to say thank you. I'm sure going over the budget is not very fun, but I see the advocacy through it, especially when you're talking about Children's Home of York and making sure that children who are in the foster care system have supports that they need during a time of crisis that they themselves cannot control. So I just want to bridge that gap and talk about something that we're trying to advocate for and in an area that we feel that York County citizens are feeling that there's a crisis, as well as something that we can't control. So I want to talk about 5G and how it's radiating and its pollution. Even Verizon and AT&amp;T Telecoms, all in their fine print, will say this is a pollutant. We live in a very toxic environment, so this is just one of many, but this is a very constant one. So, you know, on my lawn, as a homeowner, I could choose not to use Roundup, but that's my choice. When it comes to wireless, I don't have a choice anymore. So I stand before you not only as a York County citizen, but as a mom to a special needs child who is sensitive to the EMFs that are out there. A lot of neurological impact, a lot of seizures, a lot of ADHD, anxiety. So I just ask you to continue that advocacy, not only for children that are in the foster care, but for all of children in York County. I also stand before you as a nurse to let you know there's a lot of medical impact. Like I said, we live in a toxic world. Some of that medical impact that we see from radiation pollution includes neurological impact, seizures, anxiety, ADHD. All of these levels are increasing. Epilepsy Foundation says it's one out of twenty-six will suffer from a seizure. If you have a brain, you have neurons. Someone in this room, there's more than twenty-six, could possibly have a seizure at some point. Cardiac. There's a lot of cardiac implications from this, miscarriages, infertility. So you might say, hey, I don't know anybody who's had a seizure, but I know plenty of people who aren't able to have children or do get pregnant and miscarry. This is a very, very serious matter. We might be saving money on the front end, it seems like it, but on the long end and people's health, you're going to be spending a lot more money. So I just urge you to do your due diligence as elected officials. Back in August, an email was sent to the Commissioners, over eleven thousand pages showing medical impact. I just urge you to do your due diligence and read over that. Also, the U.S. EPA on their website says and acknowledge that children is a specialized group that we need to care for. Thank you.
Darla Byerly, Warrington Township. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here as one of the people to review the Pennsylvania Constitution, of which you are a trustee and have sworn an oath to uphold. In your role as Commissioner, you are a defender of the people's inherent and indefeasable rights. I want to review them in the context of broadband. Article one, Sections one and two, we, the people of Pennsylvania, have the right to enjoy and defend life and pursue our own happiness, and all power is inherent in the people. The role of government is to uphold the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. Whether the people understand or not, wireless is radiation. I've shared with you the eleven thousand pages of evidence of harm presented to the U.S. Court of Appeals proving that radiation is detrimental to life, safety, and peace. Article one, Section eight protects our right to privacy. Unlike the fiber, unlike fiber optics to the premises, wireless radiation is extremely hackable. It's the reason most government offices are hardwired and do not depend on wireless for communication. Hacking into people's devices is illegal and a direct violation of Article one, Section eight. Continuing to build out the wireless infrastructure will only perpetuate and increase the theft of private information. Article one, Section twenty-six protects the people of Pennsylvania from discrimination. The county plan is to prioritize fiber, except in urban and low-income areas. According to the statement of work prepared by Big Wireless, people living in urban areas will not have guaranteed access to broadband in their homes. This is discriminatory. Between the smart meters and Wi-Fi routers and the inside of the homes, small cell antennas blasting the streets, and base stations, antennas on schools, these residents will have no hope of escaping the constant involuntary assault of radiation, especially the children. Superior fiber to the premises can be achieved aerially in urban areas and is the responsible way to enable all county residents safe access to the internet and communications online. Article one, Section twenty-seven protects our right to clean air and the preservation of our natural resources. Wireless radiation is pollution. According to AT&amp;T and Verizon, all artificially produced ionizing and non-ionizing radiation is defined as pollution. Radiation emitting base stations, antennas, and small cells pollute our environment. As trustees, the clean and green constitutional choice to bridging the digital divide is fiber to the premises. Article ten, Section two, subjects private corporations to the provisions of the Constitution of the Commonwealth. Corporations who stand to profit from the installation of broadband must be held accountable to the Pennsylvania Constitution. So why this brief Constitution lesson? Because you, as trustees, must understand that when it comes to wireless radiation, the people's rights are being stripped away at the expense of our health, safety, and privacy. Wireless is the infrastructure required to implement a host of unconstitutional control mechanisms, including central bank, digital currency, and social credit scores. Fiber is the safe, Constitution-friendly solution. One final note. During the previous Commissioners' meeting, you agreed to table item six until we can discuss further. I've emailed you specific dates, and as those dates draw near, it is increasingly difficult to hold them open. So I would ask that you please get back to me by EOB tomorrow with a date that suits your schedules. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. If I can have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. And we'll move on to Salary Board.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Salary Board meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll open it up for any public comment. Hearing none? On to item number four.
I make a motion to approve the position, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements or as set forth in York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and rail offices as stated below with no additional benefits or concessions thus otherwise noted than there is listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. An executive session of Salary Board was held on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The purpose of discussing general personnel matters to include discussions on salary modifications, job description reviews, and reclassification reviews related to the Clerk of Courts, the Register of Wills and Clerk of Orphans Court, the District Attorney's Office, Information Technology, Court Administration, Emergency Management, Assessment, voter registration, and elections. The Salary Board discussed and received information and advice regarding such matters. The Salary Board did not adopt any policy, procedure, or take any form or action on such matters. Any items upon which action has been requested would be included as a motion on the agenda. I will open it up again for any public comment. But I have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye. Hearing none. All in favor of adjourned is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. And we'll move on to retirement board.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held on November 15th, 2023 as submitted.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll open up for any public comments. Hearing none. Lee, you're up. Is that the right one you want first? Lee, do you need me to flip or is the clicker working? Do you, will you need me to flip for you or is the clicker?
No, I can do it from next, just when we go to the.
I'll change it.
Good morning.
Morning. Morning.
Can I have two?
Yes. So we'll start actually with the uh insert, the one with the white cover. Glass is on. Worthwhile. Every year, you know, we pull together all the county pension uh fund information into our um probably the county pension plan report. So it's not only the performance, it's all the liabilities and comparison between you guys and all the other counties uh within Pennsylvania. Been doing it 16 years now. Uh, we got asked to do it one year and uh it just took off. And we love doing it and we keep doing it for everybody uh because they they find it very informative. Couple of things to note, this year, we um 53 of the um 67 counties participated, but only 62 would have been eligible um because of PMRS, uh which some of the smaller ones are in. So it was a good, good, uh good show, uh and a good sized universe to compare folks to. Page two, just some of the kind of, remember this is through the end of 2022, so it's from this year's actuarial reports that we pull all this information. I just wanted to say, if you remember last year, stocks and bonds were down, everything was down, wasn't a great year. Every county plan fell behind their assumed rate of return. But what we did see was a huge disparity between counties, depending on how they were invested. And the average county was down 13.2% last year. The worst one was down 18.5 and the best one was down 7.1. It's a huge disparity. Good news is you were the best one. And by over 2%, I would add, relative to number two. So that's, you know, kudos to all the diversification work you've done over the years. Really paid benefit uh for the fund last year. And you'll be surprised, there's some larger funds than yours, so the counties out there that just indexed everything, that are down closer to 18% last year. So that was good to see. Uh, just show you a couple of exhibits, so you can see where trends are going if we go to page seven here. Um, assumed rate of return, Melbourne, first year we ran this, everybody was 7.5. And we were saying, you know, expect low returns going forward. Everybody's been bringing up down. The the uh national average now within the US for a defined benefit plan is 7%. You guys are slightly under that, a little bit more conservative as you see there, 6.8. So more conservative from a target point of view, uh which is, you know, really a sign of a well-managed plan from a liability point of view as well. Turnover, the key is always to try and keep that 300 basis points between projected salary increase and your assumed rate of return. And you guys are exactly on that. 3.8 on your salary increase, so that's that 3% delta I'm talking about. That's what the state kind of recommend. That is the long-term kind of average of CPI. That that's why that delta's in there. Colas, no surprise, and particularly in this high inflationary environment. Uh, very few colas were awarded again last year. Uh, remember the lookback provisions now are no longer a requirement, but you do need to be above 80% funded before you can award a cola. Um, as I say, in this environment, quite expensive, so you can see actually only four counties actually awarded a cola um last year. And if we get on the performance, um you can see longer term, you guys, uh, you know, top quartile compared, whether you look five years, 10 years. Uh, and then, as I said, last year, if you go to page 14, if you look at 2022 there, you know, you're in that big group above, you know, that did better than down 11.5. And I said, as I say, you, your number came in at the top of that, down 7.1. One new exhibit we've added this year is we, because we've been doing it over 10 years now, we thought, you know, let's factor volatility in there and look at it. Kind of risk-adjusted return did you get, you know? So we're not purely looking at just return, because you can be more aggressive over time, you will tend to do better. But let's factor in some volatility in there. And what's surprising here is how poorly managed some of the county plans are. They've got sharp ratios below one. You guys are above one, which means you're being, getting more return for a unit of risk that you're taking. But most county plans are below that, so they're not really being paid for the risk that they that they have in their plans. That was a good exhibit to see. Um, and then finally, um pass through these, you can see benefit class, you're you're right in the sweet spot now, about 180. Um, there's just uh vendors, but this is the last page just to show you on this, page 22. Is just as these plans have matured, and you guys are very aware of this, uh which is why you've diversified and focused on downside volatility is as these plans mature, there's less and less active employees and more and more retired employees. Um, what does that mean? Less and less money going in, more money coming out, so we're kind of managing month by month, you know, having to sell assets to go out. So you need to be more mindful of the downside. And as you can see, your active participants now are actually lower than 50%. Um, and if you take the the terminated vested and retirees, that's above. So again, nothing to alarm you dramatically, you know, far better than those that have only about 30 to 35% that are active. There's a lot of money going out of those plans, we just hope they're well-funded. Um, but it's something, I guess, I say, you need to be mindful of over time and it's why it's important for defined benefit plans. Keep hiring, bringing new blood in that are there for 30 to 40 years that are going to keep contributing into the plan. So any questions on that one, on the the county annual database? And so you should be proud of your work, at least relative to the rest of the Pennsylvania counties when when you see that. That's on that. Uh, yes, switch to the other one if you could. And if you could take me to the uh page 10, market environment. We'll start there. We'll cover the uh markets for a few minutes and then we'll hit the highlights of your of your plans. Thank you. So you can see uh at the top there, remember, I'm talking about third quarter, but there's been a lot that's gone on in the markets the last few weeks, so I'll uh, you know, I'll obviously bring you up to speed there. But in Q3, uh GDP did surprise on the upside, came in above expectations at 4.9. It's likely going to get revised up above 5% on the back of business investment too. But primary contributing factors there were consumer spending remained strong as as folks kind of got to the end of their savings, which I'll touch uh touch on in a minute. But more importantly, what's really driven GDP uh recently has been the government spending, uh at least from the CHIPS and SCIENCE Act, with all of the manufacturing that's gone on. Not manufacturing, but building of manufacturing facilities and buildings to bring back a lot of manufacturing as we look to reshore and tighten up um global supply chains in the future. Not to say we're not manufacturing, we're not manufacturing yet, we've got to get get skilled people and train people to do that. But at least, as you can see, the bottom right there, the amount of spending that's gone on to reshore has been considerable. And that's driven a lot of, a lot of growth here uh in the US. If we look though, uh look ahead, there are some headwinds we are starting to see from an economic growth point of view moving into next year. Because eventually this Fed tightening cycle, uh which has been the most aggressive in 40 years, it's finally tentacles are finally getting into the labor market. And as you know, the the these Fed tightening cycles, you know, they take a while. They're 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 lagged, they're lagged impacts and it's been 18 months at this point. Um, it's also starting to impact the consumer for the first time. And if you look at it from the consumer point of view, you know, why has the consumer got more headwinds ahead? One, you've had the restart of student loan payments. Okay, so more money going out there. Two, you've had, well, up until the last few weeks, higher gasoline prices, which are likely to increase because OPEC uh reduced supply and they're talking again this week of reducing it even more. Okay, so when that happens, oil tends to go up and gas prices tend to go up. And finally, the big one here is this this chart in the top right. At this point, about 80% of the consumer has less savings now than when they went into the pandemic. Went into the pandemic, kind of money was free, everyone was giving money, we got used to spending, it got us through and accelerated the the US out. Um, but as we've seen recently with the uh holiday sales this past week, you know, numbers have been really strong. If you look under the hood, a lot of it has been pay now, uh buy now, pay later. So I think you're going to start to see some cracks uh within the consumer credit card debt, et cetera, going into next year. Just because rates will remain higher for longer. And then finally, from the business point of view, um, you know, we are seeing softer earnings expectations going forward. Although profits are up a a little bit now, um, we do expect earnings are down. And actually, 13 of 15 industrial sectors are actually in contraction mode, PMI well below 50. It's only really the healthcare and leisure areas of the market that that are growing at this point.
Tyus, do one question, and this is probably a dumb question, but interest charged on credit cards.
Mm-hmm.
So Visa, Discover, whatever like that. Is there any kind of regulation that makes it what they can charge consumers for using credit or not?
I'm not sure exactly as it relates to credit cards.
I mean, when you hear it going like from 10% to 15% to 20%, I mean, is there any regulation or are they just at liberty to charge whether they want to the interest rate cost?
No, no, actually, it's a great question. I don't know, I actually don't know the answer.
Okay, I just wonder.
I remember at one time it was regulated, and I think it was like 25% was the top number. There has to be a regulation.
Surely, yeah.
There is at the federal level.
It's, yeah, it's just an outrageous number.
When you see it going up all the time, I just wondered what restrictions are on something like that, but that's fine. Stupid question.
I know. It's a good question, just was an investment-related, unfortunately.
Right.
Um, you know, limited on some of the information that we get. Um, but anyway, only, I guess the only good that's come out of that, as you look at the markets and as we're going to bring you up to date performance here, is uh, you know, inflation has come down a recently 3.2%. And that's really on the back of cooling prices and uh that has led to the Fed coming out at this point and saying, looks like we've done, and you've seen the markets take off on the expectation now. Next move will be, rates will be down. And actually, as of this morning, the the probability of the first rate decrease is May of of next year now. I would say the, take that with a little pinch of salt, that's what the futures are telling you. Um, I think it'd be more likely we'll be in a kind of mild recession or something before and the Fed get hit in the face with that before we start uh on the cuts, uh because, you know, these things do lag. And uh, we've not really seen the full impact of it yet. But there's a potential they could soft land this at this point. Um, don't need to talk overseas. The the only good thing is US is well ahead of the rest of the world. Tend to be a closed economy, the less impacted from prices overseas, et cetera, like Europe, which is so reliant on on outside energy and and goods coming in. So therefore, we, you know, our our growth, um, and coming out of this COVID pandemic, we're well ahead of of the rest of the world. The other thing is because of how, you know, most of our GDP is driven by the consumer, because we have uh fixed rate mortgages and I think I just said last last meeting, you know, that averages around about three and a half percent here in the US. Our consumer's been less impacted by rate increases, whereas you see those countries that have variable rate mortgages, you know, like Australia and that, and they're shorter, like every 10 years or whatever, you've got to refinance. Those economies obviously being crushed right now and those those kind of interest rate sensitive areas in those economies are. So anyway, I'll just finish up on what did it mean for indices? No surprise, uh, you know, with oil prices surging uh in Q3, impacted equities, US stocks down 3.3, international down 4. Uh, however, US dollar did appreciate against international stocks. When you factor that in, international stocks are only down 1.3. On the bond side, yields did spike in Q3. When that happens, prices go down, so no surprise, bonds were down over 3% in in Q3. So both stocks and bonds down over over 3% here. Um, but as you can see, uh because of the shorter duration and floating rate nature of bank loans, think of that as private credit when we look at your portfolios, um, they were positive, so they didn't get impacted by the those yields spikes. And then finally, at the bottom of the page there, and I can see, I apologize, some of the formatting, when I put it in PowerPoint doesn't uh totally align, but but you can see tips were slightly better on on, you know, rising inflation in third third quarter. Um, and commodities on the back of energy, uh prices going up were fairly strong. But REITs, listed infrastructure, you know, they're big dividend paying kind of areas. When the yields spike, they're headwinds for those for those sectors. You're not in those listed, you're in the private, so you know, you're you're not down like that, you're actually positive. So that's the markets. Any questions on the markets? Now, we'll just cover a few pages of your funds. And as I said, I was bringing up to kind of speed where we are this week. But um, you can see you ended the quarter, uh just right on about 500 million. Although stocks and bonds were down over 3%, as you can see, because of the diversification of your portfolio, you were down only 1.7 net of all fees, which was right on your policy index, and that put you in the top 10% of all all uh defined benefit plans in the US. A lot of the good stuff worked for you for the quarters, you can see there, I won't go through them line by line, but as you can see, most of those are your diversifying assets, did well. And then some of the things that didn't go as well, because you don't expect all your portfolio to move in one direction at the same time, else we're not doing a job right. Uh, so there's always some things that are going to be headwinds for performance. As you can see, they were more of your traditional, along with the the, particularly the South American uh timber, uh timber uh portfolio. As we sit here today, as at the October update, the fund was up around about 3%. But we've had such a strong rally here in November, as we sit here today, your fund is actually up nearly 8% year-to-date. And that's only, not only because stocks are up double figures here in November, but with yields coming down, bond prices, the bonds are delivering too. So, yeah, who knows where we go this last month? Uh, but seasonally, December tends to be a strong market, because you get a lot of 529 money going in, a lot of IRA money going in, there's a lot of buyers. So at very least, it kind of supports the market for the most part. Um, so, and you've got about, at this point, about 100 basis points buffer above your assumed rate of return. So what you might have been given at the end of September is kind of, this is what to expect from a contribution point of view next year. Because of the recent run-up in the market, hopefully that would mean it may be a little less than that. But the only number that matters is 1231 when it comes to that, so don't make any changes to what you what you've done on a budgeting point of view. Uh, longer term, as you see there, three years and and 10 years, you know, strong performance. Um, three years, 6.4 net, 6.8 gross, so right on your assumed rate of return. Above your policy is 6, and if you just indexed it, you would have done 3.6. Again, top 10% of funds, 10 years, you know, 256 million gains, 6.8 net, 7.2 gross, again, right on policy, but above just passively investing it. Top quartile, so good, good, strong performance. But as you know, with with better risk management, lower volatility and downside, that is important because of where I say you're active to retirees of going, you know, you've been more mindful of the downside, which is why you did de-risk as well, um, back there in the third quarter, took 5% of equity off, put it in a fixed income, again, being mindful of that maturing plan, having liquidity and 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 just being safer on the downside. So I think that was good timing for you, take that. Looking ahead, we do have a farmland search going, it has to be complete, so we let Hancock know before the end of Q1 for next year. There are three, three options that we're doing due diligence on right now, and we should have that for the next meeting, that decision. Um, just want to show you a couple of pages. I know you only see me quarterly, but on page 24 here, if you see that net cash flow, that's all the activity that goes on during the meeting, between the meetings. Uh, with controllers department raising cash every month. Uh, you do see some rebalancing in there as well, from equities to to fix. Uh, you see at the bottom there, Birch Run, you did add to them uh in September, so you. see at the bottom there, Birch Run, you did add to them in September, so you did, with that five percent, you did diversify it with another intermediate of cred manager. And then the only other thing to note here, if you look at some of your real assets, real estate, et cetera, see these minus numbers coming out of those, those are those redemptions we've been getting back every quarter, you know, a lot of these firms have closed, you're not allowed to get money out, but because we got them in eighteen months ago for you, you've been getting money out every quarter, so you're a little closer to target than some funds have not been able to do that. And then just twenty-five, this is good just to see on one page, how diverse your pool is now compared to what it was, you're not only diversified by lots of different asset classes, within each asset class, you have multiple options as well, and soon, that one asset class, you only have one, the timber farmland, you'll have two there as well. So as your fund's grown, it's allowed you to do that, be mindful of volatility and diversify your pool, and there's your outcome really, you can leave it on, if you go back, all the timeframes going back ten years, you know, top of the charts there, right at the top compared to, what, fifteen, fifteen hundred of a defined benefit plans. And most importantly, if I go to the next page, twenty-seven, lot lower volatility, five percent lower volatility, beta of only point nine five, so much more defensive on the downside. You have a lot of funds, so I'm not going to go through them all, but just to wrap up, we'll maybe look, talk composite area. I say the only, the only manager that struggled somewhat compared to what we would expect was in the US equity composite, now, most of that is indexed, as you see, it's very difficult to outperform the S and P five hundred. But Twin Capital is a very defensive dividend growing kind of fund, as you added more to equities over the past years, you went into more defensive type, so no surprise to see this year them being, you know, nearly ten percent behind when the market's been run by the mega tech that don't pay dividends, so they can't buy those stocks. As the market's broadening out now, it's doing a little better, if we do go into some kind of distress next year, this type of strategy should do better. If it doesn't at that point, then that may be something we need to get back and reconsider. But everything else pretty much in line with expectation on the US side and on the global side there, as you can see, Dodge and Cox really leading the way for you this year, where it was Artisan last year, but, you know, your global has been very accretive to your portfolio. On the international side, coming in around bench, overweight the value was accretive, but some of the small cap and emerging markets was a little bit of a lag quarter there for you. But the real story begins when you get on your diversifying assets, you can see defensive equity there, I think I said about this time last year, expect a better year for that next year with cash rates higher, remember, three quarters of this portfolio sitting in T bills and cash, using that as collateral to write the options for the volatility, and you can see for the past year, that's done seventeen point five over the bench of fifteen, so two hundred and fifty basis points you're getting from riding those options, because people want certainty and they buy the insurance. So that's been a good diversifier, and only costing you twenty-eight basis points, instead of hedge funds, which we use this in place of hedge funds, would be two hundred and eighty basis points, so, and it's daily liquid. Real estate, you can see, after a tough year with Clarion taking quite a few write downs, they're now at a more reasonable spot, and is when some of these other real estate companies now within the Odyssey are taking their write downs, now you can see Clarion's, you know, performing better, and TA has just crushed it for you, remember, we got into these guys two and a half years ago, you can see the bottom right corner there, they've added nearly six percent. Why did we get into them? They only had one office, and office is the headwind. Infrastructure continues to be strong, you've been in that now three years, has made nine percent relative to five point eight, it's just been a great year, and it's constantly been positive. You know every quarter I come in here, JP Morgan will be around about two and a half, there you go again, two point six, so long term regulated income coming on that, IFM did lag a little this quarter, but very strong one year, they're more GDP sensitive throughput assets. The timber, as you can see, it's only three percent of the portfolio, but that South American part of that timber has been a headwind there, which is why we're going to take half of that portfolio and put it in a US farmland, where the thesis looking forward is much better and better regulation, et cetera, within the farmland. And then private equity, if you look on the right side there, you've been staging into that every quarter, you can see Partners made eleven five relative to three two since you got in there, Arborvest over twenty, Sigler Guff, because they've just got a lumpy one back, got a fifty percent return on the money that was put in, so I mean, these are smaller parts of the portfolio that are building out, but these are going to really help you structurally long term, as you've seen, have been good diversifiers. And then on the credit there, at the bottom, Partners and HIG again, over seven percent when the bench is, you know, it's been much lower, and that's because banks have pulled out of the lending market, and we saw SVB going down this year, the, all these private equity deals have been financed with private money from investment shops, so you're benefiting on them writing loans for twelve, thirteen percent, and just look at Partners Group, which is an open ended one for the one year, fifteen point seven percent writing loans. You thought about credit card debt. These guys, if they're willing to, you know, do the underwriting on it, and they see a profit, they can still lend money at such high rates. And then finally, the boring, we always finish on the boring piece, traditional fixed income is always going to be in around benchmark, as you can see there, Treasury's lag last quarter, but ahead this quarter, and that's purely a duration play, and your shorter duration, as you can see, did much better last quarter as yields spiked, that will reverse this quarter, and you won't see a return of Birch Run yet, because they just got funded before the end of the quarter, but you'll see that in your next report. That's a lot, you've got a lot of funds, unfortunately, but any questions on your pension?
So just overall, we're doing well or not?
You're doing very well relative to others, I mean, county funds tend to do, tend to be a lot better than municipal funds anyway, and some of the state funds, but as you saw earlier, within the counties, you know, you're doing very well, because you put a lot of attention on this, realize it's your major liability, cost each year, and have managed that side of it well as well, you know, by removing that one fiftieth, you know, you've made steady improvements on that side, and that's just enabled you to take a little less risk averse course on your assets, which is obviously paid out for you in this very volatile COVID pandemic part of the cycle.
Okay.
And I will just do the observation pages for the other two pools, if you'd like. If you go to thirty-eight, OPEB, this is pretty much going to always come in fairly close to benchmark, because it's such a smaller pool, so you have more indexing there, so you see it was down obviously more than the pension fund in the first quarter, down three point three, but right on policy. But as we sit here today, that's up around about eight point, eight point eight percent year to date now as well, which is great to see. Similar kind of things work for you, the global value kind of strategies, low vol, and your core plus fixed income, really the plus sectors, the bank loans and the IRA. And then on the backside, you do have listed infrastructure, and it's not private, because the fund's not big enough, so as you saw in the market environment, you know, obviously listed, rates go up, listed infrastructure and listed real estate. But again, over the past three years, you know, four point seven, a little above your policy, again, in the top, in the thirtieth percentile of defined benefit plans, and low fees, thirty-six basis points here. With the thought that maybe in the second half of next year, you'll have rate cuts, you know, we may want to look by the end of the first quarter next year, maybe even revisiting asset allocation here, maybe even de-risking this a little bit, start to have rate cuts at that point, having a little bit more in fixed will give a nice bump, not only from a yield point of view, but from a price appreciation point of view. You don't really want to do it until we get to the point of when we expect rate cuts. Any question on the OPEB? Finish on everybody's favorite. Yeah, the DC plan, four fifty-seven B. Here, you see the observations, over twenty-six million in the pool. Most folks, you can see about two thirds of folks are probably sitting exactly where they should be, in the low cost target date funds, eight basis points. Those that aren't, we see that mix of equity to fix, not too dissimilar to the defined benefit plan, so seems to me that the education's got through, it's pretty well thought out, what people have done from an individual point of view as well. And if I go to the next page, what you can see is, from a trending point of view, there are only very little incremental increases each quarter, but you do see some positive trends. It is a little tougher to compare these to like a corporate 401K plan, because those folks tend to not have a fine benefit plan, so they're throwing all the money in there, so the trending tends to be a little bit more steeper, you know, but when you compare your four fifty-seven Bs to, let's say, some other counties that we look at, theirs tends to be kind of dead, there's not a lot of movement on it, at least yours still seems to be trending up somewhat.
So you're saying that participation rate of twenty has gone up?
Yeah, we can see them, they can see the participant, participation rate has gone up from, there's no Y axis there unfortunately, this is taken from Empower's book, but you can see how it's, oh yeah, sixteen percent up to twenty percent over the past few years. And that's through a time where you've had COVID pandemic, so you've not had the face to face like you would have liked to have had in the past, now that's kind of kicking off again, hopefully we'll see that trend continue.
Because we started our quarterly programs again. Okay.
But, you know, as I say, don't expect it to ramp up exponentially just because of you've got a great defined benefit plan that your employees put into as well. That's my lot.
That's good.
Any questions? Thank you.
There were no executive sessions since our last meeting, I'll open it up once again for any public comment. Hearing none, if I could have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion adjourned, maybe. Second?
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of adjourned, sign of a flag, say aye and aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thanks for coming in, Lee.